We have completed the first portion of the council meeting today on redistricting, and we now move into council time. It is Wednesday, April 13. And we will begin with old business, that is approval of the minutes for April 6.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any objections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion is passed. Next, we turn to rules of procedure and the associated ordinance. Lindsay, would you be the one to lead us through this?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So what you see before you is the revised rules of procedure that reflects the discussion that the council had at the last meeting. So I believe all of the changes are down towards the bottom. If we want to scroll down for the screen. They pertain to changes as far as penalties, if you will, the punitive measures in the event that the council finds that there's been a violation of the rules of procedure. So I believe this language reflects the council's last discussion during council time, but happy to answer any questions.
Lindsay, one of the things that we got quite a bit of feedback on in the communications over the last week was that the actions to be taken when there is a violation are too slim. Would you please review what is here?
Sure. So the actions that can be taken, you know, first of all, the council could find that any violation was de minimis inconsequential. That is an option. There can be a public censure, removal of the individual from their committees, public admonishment. So this also is in addition to any of the ethical violations, which of course are separate, whether they be within the county's code of ethics or they be within state law.
Further questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I could ask one question. We discussed this last time, and it's under C. You know, we had approved an amendment to stop on the floor budgetary amendments that staff didn't where properly advised about hadn't worked, that the public wasn't aware of. And as we added this language, I'm just not so sure that we aren't contradicting ourselves with the last sentence. Nothing in this section prohibits the council from adopting amendments at any point in the process, including during the public hearing. I mean, what we were hoping for is if there's an amendment that hadn't been discussed with all the council, hadn't been really discussed openly with all the staff, wasn't posted, where the public didn't have time to comment it on, that was the whole intent. And so it seems, unless I'm reading this wrong, it looks like we just contradict ourselves in paragraph C.
It is. There are more formal ways that you could go about doing this. I know, for example, at the state legislative level, there are typical deadlines for introducing amendments to bills, and then the budget is kind of handled separately. So, you know, for example, one way you could do it would be that all amendments have to be posted, you know, a certain number of days in advance. But late amendments would need four votes instead of three, or something where it would allow the council to make, you know, technical corrections or things, you know, if there's a four out of five consent on a particular item as they hear from constituents. But what I understood the council was saying was, well, if we hear public feedback and a majority of the council then wants to amend something within the budget, they should retain that flexibility to do so. At that point, you're allowing all, you know, all amendments to potentially come in on the dais. I don't know that you can, through rule, articulate that somebody can't have contemplated or considered an amendment beforehand while still retaining the flexibility of being able to fully make any amendments with a majority council vote on the dais.
And just to remind the council, the issue for me, it was on a hearing, elected official testified. At the time, that package was not recommended by the manager. There had been no public discussion amongst us, the council, to overturn that manager recommendation. So we went through that hearing. I didn't ask any questions of that elected official because I assumed that we, since I heard nothing different, that we were going to follow the manager's recommendation on that package. And then on the dais, it changed. And it got voted, and I, so I felt like, well, we didn't really have a hearing on it because we all thought it was going to be denied. So I've just, I'm not sure what to say other than we really, I think that change was universally agreed upon by the council that we wouldn't do that any longer. We wouldn't have an amendment on the floor, especially during the budget process.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I just would like to remind ourselves that when we're on the dais, we're doing the business. We don't do the business before we get to the public meeting. We do a lot of the pre-work. We do a lot of the background work. If we get public comment, whether it's from an elected or from part of the, part of the community that generates discussion on the council to, in a majority way, make an amendment or, or change something, whether it's the budget or anything else, that's the job we're doing. We're doing the, our business meetings are to do the business, and the business shouldn't already be completed and decided before we get to the dais. So anything that limits our ability to create amendments based on public comment or elected official comment, I think is a mistake. Again, I support the 48 hours. If one of us has a significant amendment that we want to put forward to the council before we go to a public meeting, that's perfectly reasonable and we should do that. But anything that limits our ability to take comment and to do our business, that's a problem for me.
So, and I don't disagree with any of that. And again, it gets back to my, maybe it would be focused on if it's going to be a change from what we've discussed in public, doing our business, if there's going to be, you know, basically in that circumstances, we're not going to follow the county manager's recommendation, then we should have it, that 48-hour rule specifically in place. I mean, I just don't want to get to the circumstance where we're, we have that kind of amendment again on the floor, and then we just point to the last sentence that says, well, we can do it at any time. I think just having the discussions helpful for us. I just hope it doesn't replicate itself when we're no longer here and another five or four are on the dais.
Leslie, maybe I can just ask one more question. I mean, whether this is in our rules of procedure, doing our business as a council allows for amendments and discussion and changes and based on public comment and feedback. I don't know that we could limit ourselves, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see how we could limit ourselves and our ability to do our business that way.
You can, and that's essentially what the rules of procedure would be doing. Is essentially.
Leslie, are you on?
Go ahead. You can change in terms of saying right now, you can make amendments on the dais, you can propose amendments ahead of time. But this rules of procedure would say, as it pertains to the budget, this is the only allowable timeline, if you were to do that. Now, with this language in there, functionally, it doesn't restrict when the council can actually have an amendment. It expresses the intent that the counselors will, you know, distribute everything in advance, but provides the flexibility to do those amendments on the dais as well.
Leslie, did you want to say something also?
Yes, thank you, Chair Barman. Counselor Olson, I'm sorry I didn't jump in there quick enough to respond to your question, but I believe that this language does allow the council to make those decisions. And I also agree that, you know, input is taken during the meeting as, as you are present there. So this language complies with that. The only, and I guess I haven't necessarily been asked this question, but the only suggested change I would have to this language, if asked, is when it talks about providing at least 48 hours for the proposal, the part that says, or as soon as practicable, that particular language, I'm not sure is necessary, only because, I mean, you've already, you're already given the timeline of the 48 hours. And then in addition to that, the language that the council can also, during the process of being in the public hearing, make those changes.
So just dropping that, or as soon as practicable, is what you're thinking?
That is just a suggestion, only because I, I'm not sure that it's, it sort of almost contradicts the 48-hour timeline.
I agree with that. And I see at least one more head nodding.
Yeah, I would support removing that language as well.
Let's make that change then, since we've got the three. I have a concern about, it's on page 14, item 5, the absences of county counselors. And my, here's my concern. The only criterion dealing with absences is providing notice on a time basis, not any kind of notice as to the reason for the absence, so that it is automatically excused absence if it is provided, as I read this, 10 calendar days in advance. So let me just give a hypothetical here. If a counselor wants to have family vacation, I don't know, four times during the year, and two or three weeks at a time, that's okay, as long as they give 10 days' notice in advance each time. I, in my judgment, that, that kind of thing, not just for vacation, but sometimes for other reasons that are personal as well, could be a reason for an absence to be considered that it, that it is not excused. And to be, to be unexcused according to this guideline is pretty tough. So I'm, if, I could see a situation where we would have some counselors that could be absent for a really extended period, and no action could be taken. And I've, I've got a problem with that in that I think there should be, in a policy, enough teeth so that if someone is, is just wanting to be absent, not needing to be absent, that it is not acknowledged in the policy. So I'd like to see it acknowledged so that we are ensured that counselors are really doing the job that they're elected to do. So that's my feeling. I would like to see this section really changed quite a bit.
Council Chair, question related to that?
Yes.
Do you feel that the penalty that's later in that section doesn't address the concern that you have?
Which penalty are you talking about? Taking people off committees or which?
If a counselor is listed as absent unexcused for six or more Tuesday council meetings within a 12-month period, then penalties may ensue, to paraphrase.
No, because what makes them be unexcused, it can be different. It can be met by simply giving the chair and the county manager 10 days' notice, and then it's excused. It's because that provision is absent of the reason. So it, it still is a problem in my book.
So do you have any suggestions for what you'd like to see?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see a rewrite of this, of this section here, where, yes, we provide notice. And yes, we provide it to the county manager and the council chair with a reason given. If it's a confidential reason, that can be expressed. And sometimes there are, could be potentially health-related concerns that would be confidential, but by golly, they should be excused absences in that kind of a situation. But that would help you determine not just that it was a 10-day absence, as is shown at the top of the page, but what constitutes an excused absence.
So would there be a rubric for what reasons are acceptable, and how would that be applied and determined?
Well, judgment, yeah. Most of those kinds of things, I don't think should be reduced to a rubric that's on paper, but something that is, is common sense.
I, I think as we see on a daily basis, individual understandings of what is common sense vary greatly. So I would suggest instead that, to be sure that there is a common understanding, that there is something on paper, because leaving it up to individual judgment doesn't necessarily allow for consistent application of said judgment.
Yeah, it wouldn't be individual judgment, because it would be the chair with the county manager, but I hear you. And, you know, if, if the council as a whole wanted a, a rubric that can be done, it also tends to introduce yet another, I'm going to call it a game, where instead of just giving 10 days' notice and saying, boom, I'm excused, we then just use that rubric. So I don't know, it's possible to have a, a rubric. Some, some companies do, some organizations do, and probably do that well. But I don't know if other counties do. Did you encounter that at all in, in your comparison with Pierce and others, Lindsay?
No. Generally, absences of elected officials are left to the discretion of the elected official. And most rely on the, the state law in terms of abandonment of a position, but don't go to any further extent, because I think the prevailing idea is that absences are, that, that's, that's the purpose of election, if somebody isn't doing their job. And also, you know, in terms of what constitutes a confidential reason for an absence, it gets legally pretty sticky fast. For example, medical issues may be covered by, by some legal protections, but somebody may, for example, have a death in the family, and they may not want to disclose that death in the family. Well, that's not protected legally information, and so most rules of procedure don't get into that. In fact, I don't think I've ever seen a rules of procedure that does have that. Not to say there isn't one out there, but I didn't see that in any of my comparisons.
Are there other comments on the draft?
I'll only say that I think it's captured most of the, oh, pretty much all the discussion that we've had up to this point.
Counselor Medici, I can't see you. Do you have any further comment?
I, I don't.
So at this point.
I mastered this button. I guess I hadn't.
So at this point, are we looking for a motion?
Chair Barman, just so you know, yes, there, this is scheduled for a public hearing next Tuesday evening for council's consideration. So unless there's additional edits, other than, I think, the part on the budget amendments, if the council has any other additional edits, you certainly can make additional edits after the public hearing, but it is scheduled for next Tuesday night.
Does that have a time certain? Or is it at the end of the meeting?
It's at the end of the meeting with the other public hearings. We have four hearings that night. I'm, I don't recall which order it's in, but it's at the end of separate business when we go into public hearings.
That's a lot of hearings for one night. Yeah. Anything else for consideration? Okay, let's go to, I heard something.
If I can, sorry, just to clarify. So I'm making the change as it relates to the budget amendment, removing that language that we discussed with Leslie. And then all of the remaining language is staying the same, and that will be the draft that gets posted for the hearing. Am I correct in that?
That's what I, I heard. Not what I feel, but what I heard. Anything else? Okay, so let's move to new business, sales tax proposition. Kathleen?
Yes, so counsel, we've been talking, we've talked about this a few times before. Initially, it was for body cameras and still is as part of the conversation. Lindsay did speak with the auditor's office, and she can confirm if I'm saying this correctly. But if the council wishes to put this on the August agenda, we will actually have to have this on a hearing on May 13th, which would require, no, it's on the May 3rd to meet their deadline of May 13th, which would require us to put out the public notice by the end of this week. I do have Mark Gassaway here, who can provide some updated numbers on the options. And I will say, next Wednesday, I will be bringing back some further information on options on the spending potential for body cameras. I am presenting at Law &amp; Justice tomorrow morning on some jail options that also could use some of this funding as well tomorrow, which I will present to the council next Wednesday. So if you want to look at the options right now, just with regards to the finance options that Mark has prepared, we can do that. Or you can certainly also discuss if this is something you want to look at for the November ballot, then the time crunch for getting that public notice out isn't immediate as it is right now.
Counsel, would you like to hear what Mark has?
Well, and he's so patiently been waiting through all of this this morning. I see him here in his great-looking gray suit. I personally wanted to know about the different tenths, you know, what does one tenth do? What does two tenths do? What does three tenths do? Not only for the cities, but for the county. I'm all in favor of moving this forward to the earliest possible ballot measure. I don't know what the rest of you feel. I kind of sense from prior discussions that the council does support putting this on either in August or November. So I'm looking for some information today. I see he's posting it. Thanks, Mark.
Great, counsel. I hope this works. If you can see the screen, everyone, I think I've prepared a, an analysis of what would happen with the different tenths. In, in column C, there is the, the one tenth, column D is two tenths, column three is seven tenths. This also breaks it out by what the cities would receive approximately, based on population. So the county would receive 7.2 million for each tenth, and city share would be 4.8 million. And then it would be broken down as that diagram shows. The timing is, is important. If, if you decide to put this on the August ballot, we would begin collecting this in March of 2023. It would, we would institute it in January. That would be the earliest. If it goes on the November ballot, we would not begin, it wouldn't become effective until April, and we wouldn't begin collecting it until June. So deciding on which ballot to put on impacts when we would be able to begin collecting it. This is for a 12-month period. The, the total of 12 million would be a 12-month period. And then there's another analysis, another tab that would show depending on when it would, how it would impact the year. So if you could go over to, yes, the public safety. So if you were to get it on the August ballot, in 2023, we would collect the 6 million. That's what the assumption on this shows. So. And then there's all kinds of assumptions. You've seen this before, where we can change assumptions based on what the council would like to see. So. Any questions? I think it's pretty clear.
Madam Chair, may I ask on right away?
Yes.
So of course, what, this is best, based on your best forecast, obviously, this pandemic, a sales tax increase that we experienced the last year or so. I mean, what's your best forecast for that continuing, for that dropping off? We hit a recession later this year. I mean, how do all those things weigh into these projections?
Right now, the, I would say the status quo for a one-tenth sales tax is about 12 million a year. That, I mean, that's pretty established. We received that in, in 2021, the year we, we just completed. And this year, it's actually increasing right now. We're at about, about 10% above that. So forecasting up to 2023, I would say that the 12 million, barring a major, you know, recession or, you know, something happening in the economy, I would say is a, is a pretty safe projection.
When do you anticipate, and this can be, Kathleen in here too, on the, the answer, being able to add into the funding or, or revenue model, the expense model, as to how much, if any, would go for body cams, how much, if any, would go for the jail, how much, if any, would go for the sheriff's office?
Yeah, so some of that information we have for the body cameras, we've already started, I've asked for some information from the sheriff's office to also provide some more detail, because we do have some, as you know, one-time expenses that would be coming up with regards to remodels. And then there is ongoing expenses such as body cameras and any other funding that may be related to either salaries or personnel. And I would say, you know, if we were to expand the jail and have more space, that could require additional staffing in order to do that. So we're working through all of that now, and I'm hopeful to have those specifics to you next week during our council time conversation. With regards to the actual remodels, I mean, we haven't gone out for official bids on anything, but we do have, have identified as well some other revenue streams that could help offset some of the one-time expenses, such as REITs will become available next year, and then some other. So I've been working with the finance team over the last few days to really identify the one-time revenues to pay for the one-time expenses and the options for council. So I, I think being cautiously optimistic with a phased approach on how we're going to move forward with the remodels, that we can plan this out over the next few years.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and just one, just one comment that I would add. With the projection, the county receiving sales tax revenue of about 7.2 million, we've priced out the ongoing cost of the body camps at about 2 million, or maybe slightly more, depending on the year and inflation. So that would leave about 5 million that we could apply towards other, you know, public safety-type projects, including, you know, jail modifications or whatever infrastructure needs, or operations as well. So that's the number that we're kind of dealing with. And as Kathleen said, we have a list of revenue sources, some one-time, some ongoing, and the, we're looking at costing out what those one-time activities would be, depending on the preferences of the council.
And I think it's important to say too, we, it's been in the public eye the last few. And I think it's important to say too, we, it's been in the public eye in the last few weeks. We really need to look at our sheriff's department's compensation packages, from admin to corrections to deputy, patrol deputies. And that's going to take some additional revenue. So, I mean, this goes into the general fund. It is for public safety. It would be available for salaries, correct?
Yes.
And we do have, like I said, other revenue opportunities, like Mark mentioned as well, from capital improvements that we've already set money aside for repurposing some of the ARPA funding and some others. So we'll go into details with the council next week. In addition, I know we had talked about this in previous council time meetings about the city's support. I have asked Lindsay to draft a resolution for the council to review. That would be presented to the city councils for their consideration in supporting this tax. As, I mean, obviously, we can't tell them how to spend the tax, but they can certainly share their support and public safety in our community here, whether in the city jurisdiction or Clark County jurisdiction. Lindsay, do you have an update on where we're at on that resolution so that we can get that in front of council?
Yeah, I should be drafting it tomorrow. And I'm going to be drafting the resolution for the cities and a resolution for the county to also enact, and then the, the resolution for the proposition itself. And should have all of those to you tomorrow.
That's great. That was, the next questionnaire that I wanted to ask about was the, the city share. So that's great. And let me go back again to the expense side of this equation. You're, you're really doing a great job, as always, on getting some finality on what those expenses would be. And thank you for that, because I, I feel like by the time it goes to hearing on May 3rd, that we should have a pretty good idea of what those expenses are so that the public will, will know and will understand what it is really that's being put before them. Because we learned in, in Prop 10 that the public doesn't always support all of the aspects of our expenditures that we might think they would. It's something that we need to see according to their wishes when they vote, like they voted on, on Prop 10. And this will need to have similar clarity and specificity, I think, so that they do know. And then hopefully would clearly support it. And I suppose that we would also have a plan for the communication with the public about this tax distribution and, and what the expenses would be and so on, that would evolve as, as time goes along after the hearings. Because that's important.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. We can put out definitely the facts on what is this proposed public safety sales tax would support. And then we can also look at setting up a PAC who could actually do some more campaigning and stuff that staff can't do and counselors can't do. But we can certainly put out the, the information so that the, you know, what we're doing, and then look at another separate group to help advocate for that.
Other comments, questions? Do we need any action on this today, or is it simply going to hearing?
I would need to have confirmation that the council supporter to put this on the August ballot so that we can put out the public hearing notice, or if you prefer, the November ballot. That is the, the question and that we need answered today.
Well, my feeling is if the expenses are going to be ready for the August ballot, that that would be preferred. If they're not, if it, if it just can't be done because it's complex, then I would say let's push it out to November. But if you can get them ready that speedily, let's go for August.
We can work on it. I am a, I'll, I'll, let's do this. If, if I can get confirmation by end of this week, that we'll have it. By then, we'll put out the public notice. If not, I'll return back to the council for November. I mean, I think we can get preliminary numbers, but there, there definitely needs to be a phased approach. And hopefully, you know, we've got some short-term fixes that we can do that doesn't need to go out right away. But it's going to have, it's obviously, some of this stuff's going to be supporting potentially a jail remodel. That's not going to happen overnight. And so we'll see what we can do by end of the week if that is acceptable to council.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I think Mark wanted to chime in as well. Are you asking that question because in your own mind, you're trying to decide whether it'll be a tenth, two tenths, or three tenths? Because even with the knowledge, the preliminary numbers that we have now, I mean, I think they very amply support asking for the public to decide on a tenth. But if, I mean, are you looking for more fidelity to the numbers to decide whether you want to ask for more of a tax? I mean, I'm just trying to get to understand.
Well, I'm just interested in seeing the numbers. We see the revenue, so I'd like to see what the expenses are on the other side. And clearly, if the expenses needed from this totally outweigh the revenue, that would be a, a consideration, but not one to have at the outset, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, since this is, we're looking at doing this ongoing, right? This is an ongoing revenue. We usually try to match up our ongoing revenue with, and our ongoing expenses, right? So what Kathleen's talking about is there may need to be some more discussion with council because we have a block of one-time expenses and then some ongoing expenses, right? And depending on what council's preferences, we could just move money from, you know, one on, or one, one-time project to another. So it's a little bit of an art to try and match up expenses like Council Barrerman does. But I think we can present those options, what the, what you might want to choose from, and then try and match up revenue streams, one time with our one-time expenses and then our ongoing with our ongoing expenses. That's part of the model that we were showing earlier. We do know what those, or have a pretty good idea of what the ongoing body camera expenses are. And there are other ones like Counselor Medjivi, like you mentioned, the cost of increasing salaries or the need to increase operations should we expand jail capacity and things like that. Those are all things we can build into that model. And I think depending on what your choices are, we can move those, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I think, you know, we talked about November versus August. I, I think I'd prefer to see this in August. I think we have a better chance of having it passed in August. Secondarily, I think if we have an outline of, certainly the RCW says what this money can be spent on. But if we have an outline of what, what we're considering spending it on, if it were to pass, all of these decisions are also budget decisions, which would allow the public to participate in those conversations as we make those decisions. So I don't know that we need to have right down to the minutia what we're going to, what our plans are to spend the money, but what our intentions are if it were to pass, what the process would be. Once we, once we know the money is coming, once the, the sales tax is passed, then the process of how we would prioritize spending it. And that's going to be part of a public conversation as well. So I think if we can get to, you know, a nice outline of what our considerations could be or will be, that, that, that would get us to a ballot measure maybe sooner rather than later.
Any further comment? Okay, I think we have what we need on that, correct?
Yeah, it looked like Kathleen might have some, but maybe not.
No, I just want to make sure that all three of you are supporting the August ballot so that we can put this out. And the staff will continue to work on these numbers and, and get updates to the council.
Well, I'm supportive, like I said earlier, if we have a good feeling for what the expenses are. If we really don't by that time, I would rather see us postponed to November. And there, I'm talking about things like the jail. You know, that is something that may take a bit of more time than what I, what we know about right now. So.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I would only, I would only add to that, the critical timing with, with regard to the body camera program. And, you know, we started talking about this a year ago and didn't get the ballot measure passed last year. And so we still have this critical need for this body camera program, which we do know the expenses on that. Certainly, we're going to collect, if it were to pass, more than what that program will need. But at that point, we can get public input and have a better idea of what jail expenses might be and what other public safety expenses might be. So I would, I would push toward, again, to the August ballot, simply because of the body camera program.
Counselor Medviji, how about you? August or November?
So I, all along, I've been pressing to get this on August. We don't know what the economic future is going to be. There's a lot of discussion about crime and law enforcement right now. I think the sooner, the better. The, and this is something we are not imposing. We are going to tee up the, the challenges, the costs and revenue, and leave it to the voters to decide. I mean, the last ballot measure failed pretty strongly. And we'll never really know why until we put another one up. But, so I'm looking forward to August. I'm, I just want to keep it moving if, if we can satisfy all the counselors on, that we have enough data behind it. Obviously, we're going to have to convince all the city counselors as well that it's something that is supportable and is needed. So those resolutions that Lindsay is preparing are critical. And again, I'd like to strike with them and get them to the counties, cities as soon as possible.
Kathleen?
Yeah, just to add two, two more things. One, just a reminder, if we get to the hearing and we're not satisfying what the council is, we can continue that hearing and the council still has an opportunity to change their mind about the August versus November. So that, we still have that flexibility. And then Mark just kindly reminded me that the August ballot does work better with our budgeting process because our budget will be close to being done and presented during the November ballot. So this will actually, it could help with our budgeting process to ensure that it's more accurate as we move forward.
Great. Okay, let's move on to item 2.2, the canvassing board. There should be an "and" here, "and Workforce Southwest Washington." This regards two sets of appointments that we need to make. Kathleen, did you have a comment? No, I'm sorry, it's really hard to read.
Sorry, I was waving to Mark. After staring at him for the last few hours, I just was saying goodbye, I'm sorry.
There are two sets of appointments that we need to make here. And as we all know, council needs to vote on its representatives to the various committees. This was going to, these were both going to be something that was on the, the retreat that we had, had when the fifth counselor was appointed, but no such thing is possible now. And I had asked if we had volunteers for either of these, and I, I don't, I didn't get any. Did you, Kathleen?
I heard one counselor say they'll do it if nobody else is stepping up. So nobody has solidly said, yes, I will do this.
Okay, so let me ask first if there are any council volunteers for, and are we down to three counselors here now?
Yes, you are. And I can tell you Counselor Lentz was not available for those meetings. So she actually did respond saying that she was not available for those.
Okay, for the elections? So on May 2nd and May 6th, elections is looking for members to serve, it's a very small group, on the canvassing board to certify those elections. Counselor Medviji or Olson, would you be interested? These are in-person.
I could potentially do it, not knowing any unforeseen circumstances over the next few weeks.
I'm sorry, not knowing what?
Any unforeseen circumstances that may occur over the next couple of weeks.
Gotcha. And Counselor Medviji, how about you?
Yeah, I was the person that said if no one else would do it, I would do, I would volunteer. I, I mean, I filled in, I was the alternate after the chair, a previous chair before. And it, it is a time commitment.
So would one or the other of you prefer May 2 or May 6? No preference?
So this is, this is not one of the mandatory chair positions any, once we change our rules and...
No, it's not.
That's pretty out of it. Yeah, so i- if, if there is no one else, then I am happy and privileged to do it.
Nor is it of the, the vice chair, Counselor Medviji. Do you prefer Counselor Olson the second or sixth?
Uh, with, Counselor Medviji, are you, are you volunteering for both days or? I just don't know. I, I can commit to either one, I just can't, I just don't know.
So I really would like to share the wealth. I, I mean, I am now the vice chair of RTC, which is a lot more work than I realized. I mean, we're all members of a lot of committees, so I'm not anxious to pick on, up on any additional ones. So.
This is just a one day.
Well, until the election, until you actually have to serve and after the, during the August and November counts, I think there will be additional time commitment.
We'll figure those later when elections brings those to us.
Okay, so I am saying yes, put it on my calendar.
Great. For second or sixth?
The earlier date would be better.
Okay, great. May 2 for Medviji and May 6 for Olson. And I will be your backup. Counselor Olson, even though I'm not supposed to do in-person things at this point yet, but I will nevertheless be your backup.
I appreciate that.
We'll figure that out when the time comes, right? The second one is for the representative for Workforce Southwest Washington. And the reason I bring it to you now before the retreat is because we are placing workforce in jeopardy by not having that particular position filled. Now, this is an ongoing meeting. This isn't just a, a one-day activity. And it would be really advantageous to have someone on workforce where they had not just an interest in workforce, but maybe had linkages with other groups that have concern for workforce, like RTC, C-SPAN, whatever. The things that affect people who work. Concerns about women in the workforce now is a big issue with them. So there's, there's a lot going on. It's an excellent group. Are either of you interested in serving there?
So I agree, this is a great board, great work. I, I can't do it, but this is, I've served on it in the past. It's, it's a great group. It's a great board to, to be a part of. I can't.
And they have a new CEO who is, is excellent as well. Well, I will contact Counselor Lentz directly and ask her about her interest and see if she would like to do that. And if not, we'll wait for the fifth counselor and, and I'll communicate with the new CEO and tell her we're sorry, but that would be the, the situation if Counselor Lentz cannot do it. Okay, counselor reports. Hearing none, work session requests. Hearing none. Work session requests.
There are none today. Thank you.
Lindsay, any additional policy issues?
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay, then we move into executive session with a collective bargaining issue estimated to take 10 minutes. And it is 11:32 at this time. Let's plan on being back here in council time to adjourn by 11:44. Thank you, and see you in executive session, counsel. Has completed its 10-minute, council has completed its 10-minute session on collective bargaining in executive session. And so we are now back in council time on Wednesday, April 13, at, well, originally, 10:40, 11:44, for the sole purpose of adjournment. So this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.